All right, it's six thirty-two. I'm going to call this meeting the order of the Champaign County Board Committee of the Whole. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Wolken.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Toward.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Portado.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
King.
Here.
Lachin.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Pasalaqua.
Here.
Paul. Rodriguez. Stor.
Present.
Strub.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorsland.
Here.
Vannish Theranath.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Strub.
All right, is there any discussion or additions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next agenda item is the approval of the minutes. If there's no objections, I'd like to, somebody to motion for these in omnibus fashion. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Taylor. Omnibus. Can you move them? Do I have to read it?
I think you probably need to read the dates.
I have to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
I would like to propose an omnibus motion to read the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one Finance Study Session, the minutes from the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one Finance Study Session, and the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one Regular Meeting altogether.
Second, King.
All right, is there any discussion of the minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next agenda item is public participation. Ron Kester?
Hi there, my name is Ron Kester. I live at twelve oh nine West Oregon Street in Urbana. I appreciate the discussion and proposal about the need to close the downtown jail. No one on any side of this issue wants the downtown jail to remain open, and I think that's the way it's been now for about ten years. I also admit to some disappointment about the rhetoric related to the county approaching all of this as a right-size sort of plan. That doesn't fit the facts as I understand them. Let's start by dispelling a myth. There is no such thing as a minimum, maximum, or middle ground when it comes to incarceration. Jailing is driven by policy, not crime rates or criminals. And that policy is set by the state's attorney's office in collaboration with the arraignment court judges. Those are the folks who determine who will be detained while they await trial. How do we know incarceration rates are driven by policy? Because the current state's attorney, Julia Reitz, won the office in two thousand and four based in part on her opposition to over-incarceration. Back then, the incarcerated population routinely exceeded three hundred. To her credit, Reitz reduced the average to two hundred, then lowered it further through the two thousand and tens. In two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, pre-pandemic, the incarcerated population was routinely below one hundred and fifty people. Is there any reason to believe the rate can be lower? Yes, I think there's a number of excellent reasons, starting with the Pre-Trial Fairness Act, set to take effect in two thousand and twenty-three, which eliminates the system of money bail outright in the state of Illinois. Data presented by the state legislature indicate that the end-of-cash bail will lower jail populations substantially. That's the point of the legislation. It's reasonable to assume that the jail population in Champaign County in two thousand and twenty-three will also be substantially reduced. Here's a second reason. Senior Justice Randall Rosenbaum. He replaced Judge DeFonis, who retired from the bench last year. I've seen Judge Rosenbaum on the bench, and I've met with him several times in conversation back when he was the lead public defender. Champaign County believed, I'm sorry, he has a different conception of justice for Champaign County and might well be amenable to promoting alternatives to incarceration and alternative forms of detainment. You should reach out to him. Here's a third reason. The youth detention center, which was built in the nineteen nineties when the public discourse centered on the threat of a new generation of so-called "super predators." Champaign County believed that story, spent a ton of money on a specialized facility, and that facility has sat largely empty for long stretches of time. Why? Because incarceration rate is a function of policy. Here's a fourth reason. The residents of Champaign County overwhelmingly oppose using public resources for the purposes of traditional incarceration. The last time the county board asked its constituents to endorse a jail-building plan, in two thousand and sixteen, the referendum was defeated by a ratio of almost three to one. Is there any reason to believe the will of the people has changed since then? There are other good reasons to believe Champaign County can have a much lower incarceration rate, starting with, for instance, the other counties in Illinois of comparable size, such as Peoria and McLean, that have much lower rates. And in the background is the astonishing transformation taking place at the state level. The state prison system has reduced its incarceration rate by almost fifty percent over the last five years. That's the sort of progress Champaign County should be aiming for. I would like to make three recommendations that might benefit the conversation about the jail and the jail proposal. The first is that you should ask the constituents of Champaign County if they want to use public resources for the purposes of traditional incarceration. This should be based on more than anecdotal evidence, more than the opinion of the sheriff and his staff, and more than the policy positions of a prison architect who is lining up for a huge payday. It should be based on a credible survey, coupled with town hall-style meetings where all sides have a chance to be heard. Second, if you proceed with the notion that additional detainment space is needed, consider alternatives to traditional jail space. As a longtime volunteer GED tutor at the Champaign County Jail, I met hundreds of men being detained by the state while they awaited trial. The vast majority could have just as easily been housed at a Motel Six. They were never an escape risk. They were not a risk to themselves nor to the people around them. In case you're wondering, a new Motel Six franchise with more than a hundred separate rooms and built-to-last costs three point seven million dollars. Non-punitive facilities are perfectly adequate for many detainment needs. Finally, please don't equate the swift approval of a plan with responsible governance. In fact, the most responsible thing you could do would be to use the current financial resources to promote policies that everyone knows reduce incarceration: employment opportunities, educational assistance, substance abuse treatment, and networks of mutual care. Then, in two thousand and twenty-three, when the Pre-Trial Fairness Act has demonstrated the county's true jailing needs, you can return to the issue with accurate information in front of you. That's fifteen months away. Thank you for the keynote over.
Thank you. Dottie Vera-Wise?
I'm Dottie Vera-Wise. I have lived in Urbana for the last eight years. And those of you who've been on the board for a while know that at times I have come as much as four or five times a year to share information about the number of people that are in the jail in order to be able to see the trends and have a better understanding of what's going on. So it's been a little while, but I thought it would be good to review what Ron referred to about decreases in the past in the number of people in the jail. And this is based on information that I get from the county sheriff, from the sheriff's office. Some of it's easily available online, some takes a request, and some takes a bunch of searching. But from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and nineteen, there was a decrease of about thirty percent in the number of, the average daily population in the jail from almost two fifty in two thousand and twelve till to one sixty to one seventy in two thousand and nineteen. And that was policy-driven. It was partly a response to the county board setting up a community justice task force and responding to some of those recommendations, partly a response to recommendations from ILPP, the group that we consulted with, they were consultants for us, that we contracted with, and a number of their recommendations. There also had been a National Institute of Corrections report, and then there was the Racial Justice Task Force. And so, taking time to study things and actually following some recommendations made a big difference. There was also a federal grant that was used to help set up screening for mental health issues in the jail and then contracting with a local agency to provide case management for the people that were identified so that they would be connected after they left jail. Excuse me, my voice is, I guess I'm unaccustomed to public speaking after all this time. Okay, and then this more colorful graph at the bottom shows the number of people in the jail according to what month of the year it was. And I include this mainly to show that there is not a single pattern. It's kind of all over the place. To some extent, a few more in the summertime, in the cold of winter, maybe people are not out as much. And so, some of that is decreased, but it's not always predictable. Okay, and then coming on to the more recent things. What's been happening since COVID reared its ugly head? This. Let me see if I can get this one. Okay, so this is a graph of the jail population in two thousand and twenty. The blue bars are the number of people from Champaign County in Champaign County Jail. You can barely see that there's a little bit of an orange band here from April on through the end of the year that were people who were under jurisdiction of Champaign County courts and were in other county jails. One was in Piatt County and the other in Kankakee County. Those were people where there were specific security issues and in some sense protective custody for the people in the jail that were sent to other jails. And then the gray bars are those who are on electronic home detention. And that is a form of jailing in the sense that they have limited motion, they have, they can't leave their home some of the time, and they generally have to wear an ankle brace that is sometimes physically a punishment to them because of the pressure wounds that it causes. And also, it's been described that for the person who is in detention, the family becomes their jailers. And it kind of messes up the family relationships to have that happening because the family is always in the position of having to remind people what they can and can't do. So those are the three categories there. And in March, the pandemic was recognized and people realized that they needed to decrease the number of people in jail. And so, for the first couple of months after March, well, from March to April, and then pretty much stabilized from April to May, and only increased a little bit right after that. But because of policy decisions that were made, the number of people in the jail decreased significantly by about twenty to thirty. And then it popped up in the summertime as a result probably of some of the civil unrest around the country. And then it stayed more or less bouncing around in a similar area. And so, it was a hundred and sixty-six people in our county jail in December, I'm sorry, this was the average, I'm just reading it. But it was also a hundred and sixty-six in December in the county jail. And then this year, it gradually increased again. And we know that there was more gun violence in our county in, through this year. And then there were more people who were being boarded in other county jails. And one of the things that concerns me here is that it wasn't a situation where the blue bars got smaller at the same time that the orange bars were getting bigger. Somehow, the fact that there is more jail space available has correlated in time with just having more people total put in jail. And I don't know all the issues that were involved and reasons for it, but it's tempting to consider at least that maybe when there is more space, it will be filled. And that's one of the things that's a caveat in the planning for the jails in the future, for the jail space. People want to say, oh, we're being silly if we think that if we build it, they'll fill it. But this raises the question a little bit here. And so, again, I want to go back to the issue.
Point of order, do we have a time limit on speakers?
Yeah, Dottie, you probably have to wrap it up. You're over on the time.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I just want to emphasize the importance of prevention rather than treatment. I'm a doctor, and that's what we try to do. And also, the idea of policy and planning making a difference. Thank you. And I apologize, I'm making up for the last year or two.
Thanks, Dottie. Alimax Axelrod?
I'm going to be starting with the timer on my end. Do I just start? Thank you. My name is Alimax Axelrod. I'm a resident of Urbana. Sixteen months ago, after the county government admitted fault to the unfair labor practice that my union had filed, I received a utility shut-off notice. This was reported in The Intercept, October twenty twenty. I was one of the lucky ones who could pay it off, and I knew that I was lucky. I realized that this was a gap in policy due to the movement from our pandemic health plan from Phase Three to Phase Four, which allowed plan from phase three to phase four, which allowed utility shut-offs. In the 2007 Congressional Research Services Report entitled Pandemic Influenza: An Analysis of State Preparedness and Response Plans, they looked at measures that states were taken to keep their residents safe for a hypothetical pandemic. These are things that are important to do. In Table Eight, they included the continuity of essential services such as public utilities. It's not an opinion, it's not even disputable. In The Intercept's piece, a speaker from the National Consumer Law Center, paraphrasing, said that it is one of the most subtle and pernicious ways to harm people during a pandemic. It dehouses people without an eviction. Those words rang very true. So after I found myself with that utility shut-off notice, before knowing any of that, I reached out to group after group after group saying, can y'all handle this? I didn't want to do it. Who would? Who wants to talk about utilities? Groups stood up. They said, we will help, but we don't understand this fully. We understand that it's important. And they picked me to lead that campaign. It's called the No Ameren Shut-Off Campaign. It's a zero-dollar effort. I'm not here for your money. It's a grassroots campaign. There are very, very small organizations spread all across the state behind this effort. And through advocating with different public bodies, we won four statewide moratorium extensions while Trump was in office. The cooperation of the office that had helped to negotiate those four moratoria after we had pressured them through various means ended when Biden came into office. The pandemic doesn't care if you're a Democrat. The pandemic doesn't care if you're a Republican. With more cases, there's an increased probability at another strain eroding all of the hard-fought progress that we've made. The fourth moratorium lifted in April. A downward trend in our coronavirus cases stalled two weeks after utility shut-offs resumed in mid-April. What caused that to go back down was something called the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program. It was a one-time program after numerous public bodies passed resolutions calling on Governor Pritzker to act. I hope that this body considers taking a similar path forward and I'd like to thank Jacob Paul for submitting that resolution. Thank you.
I'd like to have, uh, Arthur.
Hi there, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry, it's my first time one of these. Yeah, I don't have, um, anything prepared as much as the previous speakers, but I would like to just add what I can. At the end of, or in October, the, um, the util, or sorry, the eviction moratorium ended in the state of Illinois. And I know that the sheriff extended it a few weeks, but, um, since then, they have resumed. Um, and we know that there are thousands of people in Champaign County who are at risk of eviction. And as we all know, we are still in a pandemic. Um, we're here, you know, we're here to talk about the jail today, talk about crime. And one thing that we do know is that people, you know, getting evicted, that will lead to more crime in the future. We know that this is, um, unfortunately a byproduct of people of desperation, um, and it's not something that we'd like to see in the future, anyone would like to see. I know that the, that the, um, here at the Brookins Administrative Center, there is the Regional Planning Commission that handles, um, emergency rental assistance for people. Um, and I would personally like to see more funding being put towards that and handling the number of applications. I know several people who are in the process of applying and it is very difficult for them. The, there is not someone always an, able to answer the phone if people have questions. The hours for submitting end at four thirty PM, which if you have a job is extremely difficult, especially if you don't have transportation. Um, and I'm here and I'm looking at all these, all this money that we're putting towards the jail and I was wondering if that money could be better spent instead reinforcing and supporting the, like, community services that we know reduce crime and that will reduce the impact on the community. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have Eddie Pratt Jr.
Good evening. I don't have anything prepared. This conversation is particularly visceral for me. For me as a, you know, working class, you know, black man here in CU, I've been living here since 2014. I've worked some of everywhere during that time and I've met a lot of people. I've met people who have been lucky to survive the prison industrial complex just to fight for their life every day. I was lucky enough to work beside some of these people and to hear some of their incredible stories as they try to just to do the norm while, while the, the doors and windows that we are so accustomed to being normal, being points of struggle for them. I'm in these streets daily, weekly, with unhoused, with kids, with elderly, just trying to do what I can. I can tell you this, we all lived through 2020. We lost a lot of people. We've lived through this bloody summer and we lost a lot of people. What merit is there in putting millions of dollars into a jail when people are dying out on the streets? We have over a hundred registered, that is, unhoused folks here in Champaign County. Uh, I think we all know that that number's probably triple that because people fall through the cracks. Why aren't we spending this money to end chronic homelessness? This is crime reduction. Why aren't we investing into workforce development for those who are the hardest hit from mass inequity? Exacerbated not only by the effects socially and economically from COVID, but mass inequity beset by just simply living and trying to survive in this system. I am no fan of regressive, reactive policy and this is that. Let us not mince words. The time for all of that is well and gone. While we all feel like we have no more choices, I want you to think back on the last couple of years. You tell me what choices did we have then that we don't now. Invest in bringing equity to Champaign County. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, that is it for Slips for Public Comment. Uh, and with that, uh, moving on to the next agenda item, which is communications. Are there any board members that have communications? Ms. King?
Um, so tomorrow night at six thirty, there's going to be a presentation on Zoom by the Director of the Dixon Mounds State Historic Site, Dr. Dwayne Ezery and, uh, Logan Pappenfort, who is a former second chief of the Peoria Nation of Oklahoma, who now works at Dixon Mounds. It's going to be called Illinois Mounds and Their Meanings and it's all virtual. You can find out more about it on illinoisstate museums.org or on the Dixon Mounds, uh, Facebook.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Michaels.
Yes, um, on November eleventh at the eleventh hour, which was the day of Armistice, a Ran Toole Veteran Memorial will be dedicated at our new sports complex right off of the highway and, uh, Murray Road. So I know a lot of you have some, uh, family members or friends that were part of that and it'll be a, uh, nice, short, probably half-hour event. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Um, I did want to address some of the issues that, uh, were brought up about the jail. Um, I wasn't able to be at the jail meeting. The jail was a state mandated responsibility to be funded by the county and we're supposed to provide a safe and secure place to house people and to protect the public. Uh, we are not increasing the size, the number of beds in the jail, we're consolidating the jail. Uh, one of the comments was, uh, we don't understand why, even though the sheriff has made multiple comments about the problems of classification and separating, um, inmates that may be male or female, uh, have health reasons or gang members that may be, um, on different sides of the gang. So we need individual cells, as you all know. Um, third, we do have social programs in this county and we're trying to fund even more of them for the homeless. But obviously with what's gone on in the last year or so on our streets with a nine-year-old being shot, um, a, um, running gun battle with shootings, uh, a road rage incident where somebody was shot and put in the hospital, shootings at our schools, uh, we are not fulfilling our responsibilities unless we properly fund the consolidation of this jail, um, and make sure that we have space for those people that are committing these crimes because no social program is going to change somebody's mind, change the mind of somebody who's willing to shoot up a street or a school. Right now, we're only funding it based on bonds rather than ARPA funding. Apparently, we're more interested in listening to our radical social engineering groups and supporters than protecting the public and what they've asked us to do. So I hope that we can change that. Thank you, to protect the public.
All right, are there any other board members? Ms. Lachlan?
I, excuse me, just wanted to, um, express my appreciation for everybody in Champaign County who's worked, uh, to ensure a smooth rollout so far of vaccines for the five to eleven-year-old groups. I'm so excited that my eight-year-old was able to be vaccinated this weekend and appreciate everybody continuing to mask here in our meetings properly as we know that there are still new cases being announced in Champaign County every day.
All right, are there any other board members that'd like to share communication? All right, uh, the next agenda item is policy personnel and appointment. Mr. Storey?
Thank you, Kyle. Or, uh, Mr. Patterson. Uh, the monthly human resources report is on file. Uh, item number seven, two, uh, appointments and reappointments. I'd like a omnibus, uh, resolution to, uh, for items two, A, B, C, D, and E. Resolution appointing Kelly Dillman to the Sadoris Fire Protection District on expired term ending April thirtieth, 2024. The resolution appointing James Randall to the Zoning Board of Appeals term December first, 2021 through November thirtieth, 2026. Resolution appointing Andy Quarantstrom to the Public AIDS Appeal, uh, Appeals Committee, term, uh, twelve, one, 2021 through November thirtieth, 2023. Resolution appointing Danielle Chenoweth to the Public Ales Appeals, Public Aid Appeals Committee, term December first, 2021 through November thirtieth, 2023. And resolution appointing Norman Davis to the Public Aid Appeals Committee, term December first, 2021 through November thirtieth, 2023. Uh, and, uh...
Second, Carter.
Come on. I'd so moved, Esri.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Taylor.
Thank you. All in favor of the res, uh, of these appointments, signified by, oh, wait a minute, do I do that? Yeah, okay. Sorry, I must be kind of having a brain vacation. Uh, all in favor of the omnibus resolutions, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes. Uh, resolu, item, uh, two F, resolution appointing Heather Soder as Animal Control Administrator, term January first, 2022 through December thirty-first, 2023. Do we have a motion for this appointment?
Second, Carter.
Thank you. Uh, is there discussion to the motion? Think that, uh, Mr. Thorson wanted to make a comment?
I think that would be best under other business in here, but, uh, because it's not really related to the nominee, it's related to animal control in general. So if you remember me at other business, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. That said, then, um, seeing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. There are several vacant, uh, appointments. Full list, uh, includes zoning board of appeals, trainee districts, cemetery association and boards, some of which are also listed in your yellow distributed agenda. County Clerk's monthly report, uh, is on file. Item number two, oops, item seven, C, uh, request approval of the 2022 holiday calendar. Can we have a motion for approval? Uh, Mr. Patterson? Mr. Summers? Uh, discussion to the motion, Mr. Patterson?
I'd like to amend the motion to, uh, change the title of the holiday on Monday, October tenth, 2021 to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Second, Stroh.
Thank you. Discussion to the, uh, to the amendment. No discussion? Uh, that said, then, uh, like to vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Jeez, well, let's do a raise of hands. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, that's 11 in favor. Oppose? That's 11 to six. The motion the amendment carries.
Who didn't vote?
Huh? We voted on the amendment.
Who didn't vote?
Chris didn't count his own vote, I assume, because.
Oh, it should have been 12?
12, 12 and six between the parties.
Okay. Gosh, we can add not counting to my list of yes ma'am. I thought there was. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and vote on the approval of the holiday calendar. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the amended holiday calendar.
Point of order, you need a motion.
Say again?
You need a motion for that.
We had a motion.
There's already a motion for the calendar, and then there was a motion and a second and a vote on the amendment, so the.
We're back to the original motion.
As amended.
My mistake, thank you.
Okay. So, all in favor of the amended motion to, for the holiday calendar, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I think that sounds like the motion carries. So, request approval of the 2022 County Board Calendar of Meetings that are on pages 35 through 37. I'm sure you looked at them very carefully. Can we have a motion? Ms. King, thank you. Ms. Lee Taylor, thank you for second. Discussion on the County Board Calendar of Meetings.
All right, I don't know if this is a place to make corrections or note that the committee of the whole meeting for October is marked as 1/1/1 instead of, I assume it should be 1/11?
Good catch, Jenny, good catch. With that, with that minor, with that minor change, all in favor of the motion for the County Board Calendar of Meetings, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That carries unanimously. Under other business, Mr. Thorson?
Thank you, Chair Storey. I'm the chair of the litigation committee meeting, and this is sort of where this idea first started. As you know, almost a year ago, on Christmas Day, a dog was put down here at the Animal Control Office. There was only one person working at the time, there was no double checks on that, and we do have some issues with that. We've had, there was a lot of public outcry and a task force, and two members, myself and Diane, have decided we want to try to do something to fix that. So I hope for the January committee of the whole, I will have a resolution that would direct this board to change the animal control ordinance, to have a verification system, something that when we work out the technicalities with animal control, the employees there and the bargaining units, that makes sure that two people are always signing off before an animal is put down. I think this is something that is a decision, when you do that, and if you do it alone, it's not a recoverable decision, it's not like a situation that you can move back from, of course, if you put an animal to sleep. I don't think that it would be terribly complicated, would I make sure we're doing it, do it right? But I basically want to make sure we have this resolution out there, directing us to get that ordinance modified as soon as possible. So, and I appreciate everyone that has been in support of that, I appreciate the fact that we have people on both sides of the aisle. I think this is something that we can do that will make a difference down the road, so we can avoid a situation like that again. So expect that at the January Personnel and Policy. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. Thorson. Can the secretary make a note for that? Thank you, Megan. Okay. Are there any other, any other business that anyone would like to bring before the committee of the whole on this in policy personnel and appointments? Seeing none, items to be placed on the consent agenda are number seven, A, F, seven, excuse me, seven, A, two, F, appointment of the animal control, and item seven, C, to request, or the approval of the County Board Calendar of Meetings. Those are the only two items. Chair Patterson?
Thank you. Next is finance. Ms. Tato?
Thank you. First order of business, A1, budget amendment 21-00058, Fund 676, Solid Waste Management, Department 011, Solid Waste Management, Increased Appropriations 3,609, Increased Revenue 3,609. Do I have a motion?
Storey to move?
Storey, and I saw Mr. Ezery second. Discussion. Mr. Ezery?
We're just going to say that Susan Monte is here if we've had questions of her.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Susan, for coming. All those in favor? Opposed? Budget amendment 21-00059, Fund 080, General Corporate, Department 023, Recorder, Increased Appropriations 548,567, Increased Revenue 791,000. Reason breaking even last year's best year ever, we find ourselves needing even earlier to increase the pass-through amounts to the state, which will also boost the county's revenue via the share that we keep. Do I have a motion? Mr. Summers? Ms. Lachson, second. Discussion. We do have, the recorder is here. Seeing no other discussion, I just wanted to comment, I appreciate any time that an elected official brings us additional revenue. I also know that you've been in this position a short amount of time, and that the additional revenue that you brought in over the two, the last two years is commendable. The fact that you were able to do this at the same time that you were bringing long overdue needed gender and pay equity to some of the personnel within your office, and at the same time raising public awareness on the long systemic racism that structures the way that we deal with real estate and have historically, not just in this county, but in the United States, is to be applauded. And I want to thank you very, very much for your hard work and your fiscal responsibility in the time that you were the steward of that office. Thank you, Mike.
I actually did have a question for the recorder, sorry.
No, sorry.
It's just a quick one. I understand why we're having more, you know, I mean, the housing market has been insane, everything's been crazy, it's all been great, right? But I don't, I don't remember seeing like any other budget amendments from you for like extra people or anything like that. Did you have to hire any temps or anything? I, I don't recall any of that, or did you just do this with the staff that you have?
That feels like a leading question. No.
No, no, seriously.
No, we've, the staff has done a commendable job. If you recall, last year, I had to do this as kind of my first act as the recorder. I shouted out the staff at that point. The same staff exists, except for one person who found a higher-paying job right next to her house, so it was pretty hard to keep her around when that was offered, but then we've, we've since hired to fill that position. So same number of staff, and as I said in the memo, I will still continue to shout them out. I don't think our county staff gets enough, you know, love and recognition, particularly in some departments. So I will throw that out to my chief deputy, Tony Caesar, senior clerk, Barb McLean, our clerks, Sherry Janeski and Christopher Jellin, and the newest member to our staff is Mimi Montoya, who started in March. They're all wonderful. I think all the credit deserves to go to them. Last year, when I tried to do that, somebody did interject and say that we needed to think about the recorder, too, so if anybody wants to heap praise on me for this, they're welcome to, but again, I would like to shout out the staff. They do wonderful, wonderful work. So, yeah, no temps, no anything like that, they just do great work, and will continue to do so.
Thank you. Staff is everything.
All right, thank you, and, and yeah, I should thank you to the staff that they've done a lot of work, and the fact that they were able to bring in that additional revenue and that additional volume is very much appreciated. Sorry.
And I just wanted to thank him also, because his documentary was very informative. I've lived in Champaign County my whole life, and I didn't know the history, and I thank you for sharing the history of Champaign County with constituents. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, we do have the Treasurer's monthly report, we do have the Treasurer here, if anybody has any questions of the Treasurer. Is everybody okay if I do the next two as an omnibus? All right. Resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile tax sales certificate of purchase permanent parcel number 09011-0001, and resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase permanent parcel number 20032-0008. Do I have a motion? Eric and Diane?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we also have the auditor here. Does anybody have any questions or any business before the auditor? All right. Moving on to the county executive, we are about to hear a fiscal year 2021 general corporate fund budget presentation. Projection, which is, which is a presentation. I realize this may be difficult for some of you to see, so you do have a copy of this at your spot, depending on where you're sitting, it may not project very well. So I haven't given a general fund budget report for a few months now, because we've been preparing the fiscal year 2022 budget, and within that budget, there is a projection for fiscal year 2021. As you know, numbers are constantly changing, and so this report will kind of bring you up to date on where we're projecting fiscal year 2021 revenues and expenditures to be at the end of the year. So as you know, we prepared the fiscal year 2021 revenue budget, particularly for state shared revenues, very conservatively. We were uncertain at the time of the budget preparation what the economic recovery was going to look like. We also did not know the impact of the level of the playing field legislation that we knew was going to increase revenues, but had no way to really gauge how much. So those two things playing against each other made it difficult to project, but we did, I think, in the best interest of the county, take a conservative approach, and fortunately for us, revenues have ended up coming in much greater than budgeted. The three revenue streams that I want to talk about tonight are in red, licenses and permits, grants, and state shared revenues. For licenses and permits, you just approved a budget amendment associated with the increases in this particular revenue stream, and that was a result of the strong housing market generating additional recorder fee revenues, and as you know, there was a corresponding expenditure for that, as we largely pass through most of those dollars to the state. For grants, we had two grants that we are going to be receiving in fiscal year 2021. One was unexpected, and that was the reallocation of the cure, the reallocation of the cure grant from the county public health department. That was $192,000 that was not included in the original 2021 budget. And as you know, we have that budgeted in fiscal year 2022 to pay for the county's workforce study that is going to be beginning here soon. The other grant was an increase in the Sheriff's Neighbors Grant. We initially thought that that grant was going to go into fiscal year 2022, but the most of that work has been done already, and we've drawn down almost all of the funds on that grant. You did a budget amendment earlier this year to receive those additional revenues and appropriate the additional expenditures. And the last category I want to talk about is state shared revenues, and you can see here, I've circled that particular category. The gray bars represent what the county has received and recorded year-to-date, and the middle bar, it's kind of a gold, represents what the budget was prepared as, and then the orange bar represents what we believe that we're going to receive by the end of the fiscal year. So there's still a significant amount of revenue to, you know, receive and record, so I just want to say again that these numbers are constantly fluctuating, but at this point in time, this is the expectation for those projected revenues, and they're about three and a half million dollars more in total than the original fiscal year 2021 budget. So since we finished the fiscal year 2022 budget, there has been a significant change for the projection that's included in that budget for fiscal year 2021 personal property replacement taxes, or PPRT taxes. We actually receive from the state the estimate for what they believe that they're going to distribute to us in PPRT revenues, and that is the dollar that I use for the budget. The state estimate for fiscal year 2021 was almost $862,000. The first $124,000 of that has to go to the IMRF fund. So the general fund budget was prepared with $740,000. At this point, I'm projecting that we will bring in just under $1.6 million total, which is a little over $800,000 difference. So the Department of Revenue has provided us with some explanations about that. One of those is the timing of the tax due dates, and another is legislation that changed some of the corporate loopholes in taxes that have caused additional taxes to be collected and distributed, and then also industries that performed well throughout the pandemic more than offset the losses from industries that did not perform as well. In this chart, you can see a history back to 2014, and I know during the financial forecast that you have heard me say that this revenue stream is just extremely volatile, and I know this is a pretty small chart, but you can see it's down and then up, and then down and then up, but nothing like we are expecting to see in fiscal year 2021. The next two categories, sales tax and quarter cent sales tax, again, that is largely being driven by preparing the budget conservatively with the unknown outcome of the ongoing pandemic, and also increases driven by the level of the playing field legislation. We knew that with the increases in sales tax, that there was going to be a decrease in use tax, and we had accounted for that in the budget, and at this point, it looks like it's going to be very close to what the budget was. it's going to be very close to what the budget was. For income taxes, in preparing the budget, I rely on the Illinois Municipal League's estimates, and they have adjusted their estimates since we initially prepared the Fiscal Year 2021 budget four times. So as you can see here, we're expecting to bring in a little over $1 million in income tax, in additional income tax than what the original budget was prepared. And in a most recent explanation that the Illinois Municipal League provided, that is a basically combination of both individual and corporate income tax revenues coming in much greater than initially anticipated. This last revenue stream, video gaming, is a fairly small revenue stream, but again, unprecedented growth, and we actually are expecting $41,000 more than what the initial budget was prepared at. And I looked, I took a look back at this today, just to see, you know, what, what was going on. We have never historically received revenue in excess of $9,000 a month until this year, and we, seven out of nine months of revenue receipts that we have received so far have been in excess of $9,000. Some of those months were in excess of $10,000 and $11,000. So I don't know if that's because, you know, people were home for so long and didn't get a game, and so they just came out and spent their money, but it's going to result in additional revenue for Champaign County. So moving to the expenditure budget, we, we talked about already, there were going to be some increased expenditures associated with the recorder revenues being passed on to the state, and also the increase in the Neighbors Grant. But we do anticipate that we will still underspend the Fiscal Year 2021 expenditure budget, and that is largely being driven by underspending and personnel. So at this point, and again, I don't know how many positions will be hired between now and the end of the year, but at this point, the projection is that we will underspend the personnel budget by about $1.2 million. And if you looked at the HR report that was in the packet earlier, I believe there were 24, actually, I think I have it on here, yep, 24 general fund vacancies that were on that report. So this is a summary of the original Fiscal Year 2021 Revenue and Expenditure Budget, and the projection, as you can see, the revenue to expenditure difference at this point is projected to be about $4.8 million surplus. The fund balance projection at the end of 2021 is expected to be about $14.4 million, which is a 34.8% fund balance. And just leading into Fiscal Year 2022, you are aware that we are going to be transferring a significant portion of this surplus to the capital budget to address some of the county's needs in, in the Fiscal Year 2022 budget. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Tammy? Mr. Patterson?
Just real quick about the gaming tax. I think that was kind of before my time. Does that apply countywide, or is that only unincorporated areas?
The, the unincorporated locations.
And what is, how does that tax work? Like, what is the rate?
I'm sorry, what?
So how does that tax work? Like, how much are, are we taxing those?
It's not a direct tax from the county. It's administered through the Illinois Gaming Board, and it's a percentage of the gaming fees that are collected and then distributed. I can't, I can't get into the weeds because I honestly don't know exactly what the formula is for it. But, but the Illinois Gaming Board distributes it to the county based on the amount of dollars that are spent and distributed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. McGuire?
Thank you. So you said we had, how many positions open?
There were 24 vacancies on the most, that are in the general fund only on the most recent HR report.
So how many positions do we have in, in the general fund totally?
A little over 400.
It's about 5%. I know that the Highway Department has an open bookkeeping position. Okay, either way, um, thank you for clarifying that. So how are we, how do we address this issue? I know we bargain for wages, but we need to fill these positions.
Well, we're hoping that the workforce study helps us figure out better ways of doing both retention and recruitment. Part of that could be salary. Everybody always thinks if you just pay people more, they will come, but that's not always the case. So we're hoping that we can come up with some other things as well that might be attractive to people, that thinking this is a good place to work. But we have had a lot of vacancies in the last year, more than usual, and I think that that's not just in Champaign County, but I think the cities and the neighboring counties are experiencing the same thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would just like to end by saying thank you. I always appreciate a conservative estimate, where we get good news at the end of the year than the opposite. So I mean, this maybe is super good news, but thank you. And I know that you worked, that the last year has been a very volatile time to try to project revenues because there's been so many moving factors, so thank you for all your work for this. Thank you. I, I think I got a lot more gray hair over this past year. For sure, for sure. And, and I will say, every time I get a call from Tammy lately, it's like, hey, good news! This revenue is going to be better than we thought. I'm like, I'll always take that phone call. All right. Any, any other questions for the Executive? Uh, yes, Mr. Patterson?
I guess I just want to thank Tammy for taking a very complex sets of data and putting it into a very concise, comprehensible five slides. Well, really, if you don't count the cover one, it's four slides.
All right, thanks. Um, any other business? I don't have anything. I don't have a Chair's Report. What? Sorry. Sorry, sorry. I, I was excited. I got ahead of myself. Okay, Annual Tax Levy Ordinance. Do I have a motion? Do I have to, do I have to, just legally, do I have to read it? Okay. All right, Mr. Goss? And Mr. Summers, second. Sorry, I was just excited. I thought I was going pretty fast here.
I moved the, we approved the Annual Tax Levy Ordinance.
Okay, and Mr. Summers, second, and do I have discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, next up, Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, Mr. Patterson, second, discussion. Uh, just one point of clarification, we have an excess in expenditures over revenue, and that's being driven by the money that we're putting into CARF. Is that accurate, Tammy? I just wanted, that question came up in my caucus, and I just want to make sure that... There are, that's a difficult question to answer. There are multiple funds that will be drawing from fund balances in '22. So in part, yes. All right, any other questions besides that one? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Ms. Carter?
So would she let us know what those overflow of revenue would be used towards? Or how do, how will we go about that? Because I'm in particular thinking, okay, how are we going to get extra funds to the jail? You know, as far as, you know, to address the, the issues going on with the jail. I know that the ARPA funds wouldn't cover all of that, and also broadband. You know, we know both of those are very large expenditures that we're looking at, so I didn't know if that overflow of revenue would help either one of those causes.
Are you talking about for Fiscal Year 2021 or for Fiscal Year 2022? Because in Fiscal Year 2021, we did have a surplus in the general fund, but in Fiscal Year, I believe, Stephanie, you were talking about the, the deficit in the budget for Fiscal Year 2022, correct? Right. So there's, we're actually drawing on fund balances in Fiscal Year 2022 to pay for things. We don't have a surplus, I guess, in Fiscal Year 2022. If I may, just like to give one concrete example, so we, as Tammy just said, our, our planned general fund, fund balance is, what, our general, our fund balance was 34%, which is, you know, quite a bit higher than our target. And so we, as a body, agreed to put $3.7 million into Capital Asset Replacement Fund, which, to your question, the motivation of that, the driving force of that is to figure out, or is to pay for the design of the jail. And then also to, if we have money left over, to do things like deal with the, the space needs of folks like the sheriff's office, the clerk's office, and the public defender's office. And then we, in addition, allocated some of the ARPA money also, right, to address those needs. So in total, we have $8 million roughly, in sort of just out-there capital money that we can use for that landscape of things. But so that's just one, like, but that's probably the biggest driving example, but that's, yeah. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Fertato, can I ask that this not go on consent agenda? Right, right. Okay, so we will keep that on, if we can keep that off of consent. All right, so now for my optimistic earlier, I don't have any other business. Anybody else? I don't have a Chair's Report. So I have, for consent, I believe I have A one and two, B two and three, and D two? That square with what you all have? And with that, Mr. Patterson?
All right. And last, we have Justice and Social Services. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Kyle. For monthly reports, we have Provision and Court Services. September of this year has been placed on file. Public Defenders for September and October of 2021 is available online. Item B, Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report for September 2021 is information only. Item C, I need a motion for, to request, to request approval for release of RFP 2021-011 for Digital Evidence Management System.
So move, scrub.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Any opposed?
Motion passes. I do not have any other business. I do not have a Chair's Report. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda, nine C one. Back to you, Kyle.
All right. Seeing no other business before the Board, call this meeting adjourned.